Do you have anything to add? Okay, alright, under item A, a council person wanted to allow somebody to speak on the fire station site. Due to that, I decided to put on here that we would allow other people to speak about the fire station site. At this time, there is a site on 119 that bids went out for, however, bids don't have to be accepted. So, we will allow whoever wants to get up and comment, I would like to try to limit it to two to three minutes, nobody over three minutes for sure, and try to have a max of two to three, four and again, if there is any. So, who would like to go first? Take your name and how you feel about it.
I'm Mayor City Council, I'm Tommy Reeves, I live at thirteen fifty-nine Monteville Road. My concern is the proposed site on Highway one nineteen for the new fire station. If this was the only location, I'll sure give this here all my life, and I will be the first one to say I'd give you my full support if this was the only location we didn't go. The city has several locations on Highway seventy-eight. Highway one nineteen is residential section. Highway seventy-eight is a commercial section. Highway one nineteen, in my opinion, lacks visibility, and I've even heard this is going to require two red lights to stop the traffic to get the fire trucks out. Highway seventy-eight, as far as my opinion goes, has great visibility, and I've heard talk of one red light, so that'll indicate the visibility issue about getting the truck out. Highway one nineteen supports down the valley, of course, you've got the Haba Hills and you've got the rural development. Highway seventy-eight supports Lee's High School, Lee's Elementary School, the rural development, the Haba Hills, the apartment complexes, the business district, I-20, and by all means, the Bass Pro Shop and Grand River in addition to down the valley. It's also my understanding that the Bass Pro Shop is helping fund some of this money that is going towards the new fire station. Midruss Park Hall and Mr. Kyle has proven that the Highway seventy-eight location meets the mileage requirement for our citizens down the valley. Mr. Mayor, one of your concerns was the number of houses that would be passed going through Roosevelt Street and President Street, whether we put it on one nineteen or on Highway seventy-eight. And I've counted up the houses, I came up with twenty-six on either street. It pretty much works out to be the same. Let's talk about the borders on Highway seventy-eight. It's all commercial, the front side, the back side, the left and the right. Talk about the borders on one nineteen. It joins our city park, it joins Little Haba River, it joins the rural development directly across the street, and by all means, let's talk about the property looking in on the right-hand side, one of our major water supplies, Ravelry Springs. Does anyone know about the runoff into our drinking water and what it can do to the spring? I'm not sure that anybody's familiar with that. One of my main concerns if I was a resident of rural development directly across the street coming down the driveway. We have flooding problems in the park today, and I'm sure we're gonna have two flooding problems if we do decide to develop the property there. Now, my number one concern and the biggest issue that I've got with this, you will be building on swamp. We, I think, all know that ground down there and how unstable it is. Unstable property leads to ground that can shift and settle. Is this the land you would want to build your house on? And unsettling ground, from my experience, you build problems many years down the road. To get started on the one nineteen project, you are going to have to clear the property, take down the bad dirt, and you're gonna have to fill it in with good dirt. You're gonna have to raise the grade of the property, and also compact the soil. Now, just to get started, that's what you've got to do on this property that I consider swamp-like. I'm gonna estimate that somewhere between a hundred, hundred and fifty thousand dollars that taxpayers are gonna have to pay to get this property started. Mr. Mayor, in your January the twenty-fourth work session, several council members had concerns for the one nineteen location. You stated, and I will quote, "Is cost your concern?" Because if it is, the cost is gonna be higher on the one nineteen project. And I think there's, everybody in this community has a major concern about how our money is spent. And if we can save money and have a good location, then I think that's the most logical thing that we can do. I'm gonna close with count what I opened up with. If one nineteen was our only location, you would have my full support. In an economic and good common sense form, please reconsider the location for the fire station.
Anybody who wants to get up, I'll for them. Are you against?
Huh?
Are you against?
Bill Martin, my job.
How about it?
No, I want to, I want to request, so I'm not forward or I'm against it. You can either recommend it, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for it. I think we're making four thousand yards of muck out front.
Oh, it's a little bit more.
Very close. And then, we found out after day on the four thousand yards, so it's not like that to nobody. Dead South come out today, we looked at it, Rowland's thirty feet deep, Rowland Springs. The most part of well sites are two hundred to three hundred, this is thirty feet, Rowland Springs. And this is adjacent to Rowland, and if you take out four thousand yards of muck, could, that's why I said I'm forward, I'm against it, could this affect the integrity of Rowland Springs? Like you said, Tommy, does that affect it? I would ask y'all to let me get out of Mount River Water up here, they're specialists. That's what they do for a living, we pay our dues, just like y'all part of Alabama Municipal Group. They can come up here and do a site study, I know you talked to other guys, Mike, environmental assessments, but they can come up here and tell us if this is gonna affect Rowland Springs, that's a fragile, that thing's been there for a long, long time. And I would like, if y'all would, let me have any more come up here, George Rose and his group.
Mayor, we do have a geotechnical report on this site that was performed by a contractor engineer. We can make that available to them. All we're doing is taking out the unsuitable soil on top of the rock. And we're not disturbing any rock, we're not fracturing any rock, we're not doing anything that would actually get to the water source.
Can you say that, Frank? I love you there, but that's, you know, that's, I just need this answer right there. But I just wanted on record that, you know, we got a concern, we, everybody in here is on this water, so I really like to look at it, now that's my concern.
I for the one nineteen, I got him, bye.
I am a park shop set, uh, I am for the one nineteen site, but I also like to think outside the box, if we could. The fire station design has to be on Highway one nineteen, or Highway seventy-eight. You could be back in your neck of the woods, Mayor. You can have signs that point to all the residents of the city, we know where it's gonna be. And the thing is, a fire station is supposed to be useful for the residents, and so you can have signs directing it. There could be land available, and some of these other roads back there that could be available, that would not be hazardous to building the site, that would be thing outside the box. Ms. Carrowell said that the site off of Calaway's, the general wants to have a purchase price for it. Well, we own land behind Calaway, it could be possible to get a twenty-year lease on that property. We still own the property, we pay so much, in fact, we could throw it as a bonus, the side Calaway's that you can have on the twenty-year lease. Things change in twenty years, if it was down by Calaway's, you'd be able to service further down the valley. You'd be able to inquire about other people that might want to come to steal some of the weeds if you go down Highway one nineteen, and that's something that we consider. You think about cost, I teach economics at Just State, community municipalities get very short sighted, looking at the cost here and now, not like the long-run cost. People say there's a shortage of water, that's a lie. If you look at a world globe, I believe something like seventy-two percent of earth surface is covered with water. It's impossible to help shortage of water. You can take salt out of water, and you can build pipelines, but there's no shortage of water. Will you answer the situation that if we were to look at the site behind Calaway, beside Calaway, it is possible to put pilings to the ground, evolve into a golf course, we've all seen thirty, forty-story condominiums built on sand, and save the weight, the cost is too high, so let's look at the cost over thirty-three here. So I wish that you would consider moving further down the valley on either one nineteen or on Jimmy Rock or some of those other ones, if you land the sale, it'd be available, the land would be stable, and it would serve without it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I know we're in debate or anything, but really what this, well, let's comment about anything, about the fire station. But as far as the Zooker Road site, the problem with it is it didn't meet the five-mile requirements. We gotta get within five miles of people out on the western part of town too, and it didn't meet that. That was the problem. Also, we're running into all kinds of land issues, underground springs, sinkholes, inability to perk, it didn't allow for us to just run with two fire stations. That's the problem with that, two, a fire station, we figured it out, keeping our sound, we figured it out. Fire station probably cost us manpower-wise around two hundred thousand dollars a year. Have to have a perk, two people every third, you know, a day, so that's the minimum. And yet, you know, so that's one of the other issues with that, but we got to looking at the five-mile rule on the people out in the western part of town, they didn't meet it, didn't even come close to some of them. So we couldn't cover everybody. So we had to either go further out on the Rex Lake Road, which was thirteen dollars a square foot, or we had to look at something different. And that's what the Zooker Road's problem is. It's not that we don't want to get everybody a fire station around town, you know, but it's the cost and the building to get rotten and start everybody. That's what the problem with Zooker was, and all of it. I think the main issue now, and I'm sure one day if we can get to a third fire station, but in a couple of years when we're living on three cents, and we've gotta try to prepare for that, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough, so two stations really serves the better, that's what brought all of this on. Somebody that's against the one nineteen station or something, that if y'all want to step up, or Mr. Reeves say what y'all want him to say, I mean, what y'all agreed with, or if not, is there somebody for it? Another person for it, and then we'll shut it down. That it? Okay, alright, we'll move on till we get to the actual item I, and then we'll take it up then. Appreciate it, appreciate y'all's comments. I know everybody's concerned about getting a fire station, it's, people down the valley's rates are unbelievable, people, somebody come to their rates, it went up ten points, three hundred to three thousand dollars a rate. So I know it's a problem. Alright, resolution B. Two thousand eleven oh two oh six relating to software purchase. I guess I'll get Mr. Morgan.
This is, we've been looking at this for the past two and a half years. It's to migrate away from, we have paper files, we've already put in, scan, door, everything that's on the board. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of paper that you saw, that's it all. Start that, from revenues to residential revenues, we've got about twenty-five. We each have our own system, all of them, the, I think, the general, the city, the police files, the fair records would all be in their own, they've got their own system.
Can we already vote?
Yes.
I make a motion that we pass resolution twenty eleven oh two oh six concerning the purchase of documents being software.
I'll second.
Ms. Carrowell got the second one, I appreciate it. Any discussion? All those in favor of two thousand eleven oh two oh six relating to software, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Alright, let's see. Two thousand eleven, item C, two thousand eleven oh two oh seven relating to door security. Let's see what this is. Alright, go ahead.
This is currently, we've got, it's holidayed in there, I'll back up the stuff. It is, there's one coded May lock door that the police have been selling. This is to update that thing at the standards, as well as to back doors that they have, and something for City Hall, as we said, mostly on counter, people just walk out here, we have no idea what's happening in there, so if you walk in, it'll be mine.
Now, not to come in the front door.
Not the front door, no, it's to go the next, behind the counter.
Back behind the counter.
Police station in the back door.
Yeah, I got that, but I'm coming on the City Hall side, we're not gonna put a lock up the front.
The last door will still be.
Well, that'd be able to make it to the county a bit more.
To the county, yes, gotcha.
That's correct.
This is also a voted item.
I move that we approve resolution twenty eleven oh two oh seven authorizing the expenditure for security door locks.
Second.
Have you checked the real prices of these? How many dollars, we talking about, forty dollars?
Six.
It's six.
Six?
It's six. It's kinda like thinking for the future a little bit. Database is, will be owned by the city, the program's owned by the city, and it can be incorporated to other buildings down the road if the city saw it shows to.
Plus, the cards that you already have, the time cards, are the proximity readers. I mean, they read, cards are read by the proximity reader.
Any others?
What you saying, it is awesome. He told us to six thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, but just call it and set up and claim, just another five dollars?
That's correct. That's correct.
What are they gonna do?
We've got, we've got to run the cabling in the building.
Yeah, we got to, computers still.
Computer software, and then they have to install the hardware at each door, and the cabling to that hardware, and the server.
So, just take one for one?
We had, no, we had two. One was Security one oh one, and the other, the lowest bid, which you had closed, was the Lori Reagan.
And all the claim is gonna come with?
Yes.
I've heard it happen, you know, it's on your lot.
But it does allow for badge access, or a lot of other things that we could explain. That thing runs off of our timekeeping system, which is bad for it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of two thousand eleven oh two oh seven, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Alright, do we take these business licenses all together, or we gotta do it one time?
I think one may be different, because it's time, but.
I thought that she said that, that's the one I was gonna ask about, she said that it's barred. I thought she said that likely the only refund that is time barred.
Two thousand seven.
Right.
That's why they're very, very, she doesn't work refund for oh seven.
But it's time barred.
That's just what cares, I'm saying, if the time is running, then bar it, you know.
Which one is that?
So forth.
It's oh four?
Yes.
This is RDS?
Yep. You can get carried away.
Well, the business side of this stuff, every side.
That is some business, you know, baby net.
I know, that's what I'm saying, the resolution.
Alright. I guess, I guess I'll go to, some business from baby net out, paying their business license to RDS and just getting applied to leave out, is that correct?
I think, yeah.
Basically, that's what it's, we're saying.
Yeah, she may have been buying one for baby net too.
They didn't have a place.
No, no, I know.
Alright, I guess we'll have to take it separate.
You can pay the one, two, and three.
Alright, I hear a motion, no, alright, y'all understand they're paying it to us, they owe it to us. Two thousand eleven oh two one, two thousand eleven oh two two, two thousand eleven oh two three. All are not time barred, whatever y'all want to do.
I move that we approve resolution two thousand eleven oh two oh one, oh, two thousand eleven oh two oh two, and two thousand eleven oh two oh three.
Any discussion?
Yeah, well, I do. Now, it seems to me that we've been spending our time, ours, collecting all these business license refunds and everything. You know, I do have a problem, if we're gonna give them all this money back and not pay for our works we're doing. And the reason for that is, is that we just finished talking about the people that live here in the city, how they're trying to, you know, we've had to charge them off on taxes and stuff with these garden, not the garden, but the yard sales and stuff. Now, if we let these people get away, it's their property, pay us, sure enough, then we need to let our citizens get away with it, or else we need to charge them, whatever took the care of them, the lack.
The problem is, I don't think these people did it, I think it's RDS. I think we'd have to go out to RDS for them, because they, they miss the plot.
How long would it be, two years, maybe a year, right after year? Yeah, four years of this, so we, we inherited, we inherited this.
Yeah, we didn't.
This year, we needed a lot out because we, it's very, you're doing it this year.
This is where Alatax actually billed them for their business license renewal.
More leaves that we got than we were supposed to get.
They gave it to the wrong city, in other words.
Shouldn't they go through Alatax to get it back?
No, because Alatax forwarded the money, uh, so.
They're forwarded.
We got the money.
Okay, we got the money to get it back, but some of them need to pay for this, either one.
I understand, I think there's.
It don't make sense, we charge dollars, seasons for the same, you know, nut shells, the same thing.
They're operating, they should. They, I mean, they're not even here.
But if we deny it for, I said, and you will have gotten, you will have got serviced.
Right, that's five hundred dollars, five hundred. Okay, any other discussion? Alright, do we have a motion, second?
Of the first three.
Alright, all those in favor of giving a refund on two thousand eleven oh two oh one, two thousand eleven oh two oh two, two thousand eleven oh two oh three, they're not time barred because they're active two thousand seven, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Nope.
Alright. Alright, resolution two thousand eleven oh two oh four is a four hundred seventeen dollars, ninety-seven, ninety-six cents that was from the year two thousand seven, our attorney recommended that it's time barred because it's been too long to try to get the money back, I hear a motion on that. Alright, any discussion? All those in favor of denying two thousand eleven oh two oh four, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Alright. Okay. Resolution two thousand eleven oh two oh nine was given to y'all today because I hadn't got it, so I thought it already been written, but I can't. You will look, and it is administrative policy concerning a first offense for yard sale permits. Says, "For us, the city of Leeds recognizes excessive charging fee for yard sales and registered low sales. However, the city also recognizes potential for a changing population, therefore, the city also recognizes the potential for omissions and mistakes. Due to that fact, the city recognizes that something more sustaining than a warning is necessary to enforce this requirement, however, a normal citation for a first offense could be excessively burdensome. City wishes to institute the following policy. During an immediate seven-day period following the violation, the side individual may acquire a permit with a penalty double the permit fee, plus an administrative cost necessary to police this action and administer paperwork. Administrative fee is currently assessed for forty dollars. That's what I recommend, what I wrote, y'all can change this. In lieu of any citation for a first offense, fair to acquire yard sale permit, a late fee result in a total of forty-six dollars, that would be double the three dollars plus forty dollars for permit administration, if paid within seven days. Therefore, an ordinance officer representing the city may issue a citation not enough that will not go into effect for seven days from the day of the citation. Fair to pay and acquire a late permit resulting in the original citation becoming effective after seven days, that'd be calendar days and not working days. That would apply only to a first-time offense, any subsequent offenses would be treated as a normal violation." You can read where I've got examples of a dispute, it says, "Any dispute with whether this is a first-time offense could exempt the discretion of the enforcement officer." Examples would be, man and wife, for one time, a man might say, "I'm running this yard sale." Six months later, the wife might say, "I'm running this yard sale," and both might claim as a first offense as well. That's the same house, that's not, that wouldn't be true. Also, you have example two, address failed to obtain a permit for first offense, six months later, same thing happened, and interim property changed ownership, and its case could be up to the enforcement officer, due diligence, but the burden of proof will be on the side of individuals, because of circumstance within seven days. Alright, that is what I said I would try to write up from the work session. And it allows for, you know, the fact that we gotta send some money around to do it, we need to keep up with if people running businesses in their front yard, things like that. And so, if there's any, y'all wanna look at it, previous written, or make a recommended changes.
Mayor, I think this is exactly as we discussed it in our work session, so I would, I would make a recommendation that we pass resolution twenty eleven oh two oh nine.
Alright, any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor.
Mr. Kyle?
I appreciate y'all looking over this, and we structured this, 'cause I know, one lady I've talked to was gonna be a burden over the cost of it, and she was like, we are trying to work with it. And I appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kyle. Any other discussion?
Mayor, I have a question, did you mean discretion as opposed to discrepancy when the end of dispute, but the last whereas?
Oh, yeah, Kevin.
Discretion, yeah.
Well, actually, I dictate this stuff, well, I'm thinking it up. Kevin's supposed to F-seven these things. Kevin's supposed to F seven these things, I appreciate that, Keith. Okay, you guys, where are they?
D U is D U E, not D O.
Uh, any, any more money?
I didn't get this before the meeting.
I, I appreciate that, Keith, to the discretion of the enforcement officer. Alright. All those in favor of two thousand eleven oh two oh nine, say aye. All opposed say no. Alright. Resolution two thousand eleven oh two oh five relates to the site clearing bid award. Mr. Spencer, our engineer, would like to get up and talk about this, uh, and, uh, it's a legal, legal obligation of, uh, bringing it tonight because bids were open this last week. So he can, he's gonna talk about, you know, what are the questions y'all have, and then we can table it, uh, we can, uh, vote on it, whatever you want to do. Alright, go ahead.
Mayor, uh, colleague, in December, uh, this, uh, twenty ten, we looked at page thirty of, uh, one nineteen site and tried to do our due diligence on, on how this site would work with the block, uh, fire station. Uh, one of the things that we did, we looked, uh, in terms of site distance, we went out and shot the site distance, it will hopefully be, uh, a driveway permit for one nineteen, uh, we've got a highway department, they have no problem permitting, uh, a site, a, uh, a driveway in that location, it will have to have a emergency signal, uh, that the fire station can use, uh, within hour. Uh, we also did a geotechnical study, because this area is lung, I was concerned that there might be sinkholes on the site. Contour engineering came in and, uh, drilled the site to see what the rock was. The rock varies on that site, uh, from eight and a half feet in one corner to about two feet deep on, uh, majority of the site. Uh, we've got their recommendations as to how to install fill on this site, bring it up to an elevation which is above the hundred year flood, which is required by ordinance. I also had a contractor, a local contractor, look at a preliminary design, we had come up with a cost, and they, at that time, we had estimated the cost, uh, of filling that site and bringing it up to play at seventy five thousand dollars. Uh, one of the things that changed when we went into the final design, we went to a three base station as opposed to a two base station, so we've eliminated one fire station, and so that extended the footprint, uh, so, and the, uh, fire chief also acquired fifteen parking spaces on the site. So that, that requires us to have some additional fill, uh, to the site. Uh, so we went to bids, uh, which that was December twenty eighth when I rest of the water, you know, passed the resolution, I believe it was January third, to, uh, solicit bids, uh, which we advertised the bids, uh, talking to Leeds News and Birmingham News. Uh, took bids and we had, uh, twelve bidders take out, uh, bid packages, and we received, uh, a total of eleven bids on the project. The low bid was submitted by Walter Patton Company in a amount of one hundred and five thousand seven dollars and fifty cents. At this time, uh, you can, uh, award, I made a recommendation to, uh, award the bid to the lowest and best bid, which is Walter Patton, at one oh five seven fifty. Uh, I believe the second bid of this, uh, was one oh five eight seventy five, and then the bids went, went up from there. Uh, at this time, you can, uh, vote to award it. We'll make it subject to, you can do vote to award, uh, if the water board has concerns about their wellhead perfection, I will make, uh, the construction methods and the, uh, geotechnical report well to them. Uh, and I'd like to have an answer back from rural water, there's impacting well to the spring before we actually put work contracts. You can award it subject to that.
Um, I have a question, I'm looking at what all this bid includes, and one of the concerns that obviously we keep hearing about is where is the water gonna go? If you build this up, this is a low place that holds water, you're gonna bring it up above the current level, above the flood line. And we, people are worried about where's, where's that water going? Is it gonna flood that, and I don't see anything on here about drainage, piping for that to move that water, this is strictly dirt.
All, all we're doing is bringing it to pad load, to pad ready condition. The storm drains will be at rest when we actually do the station. Now, you have two ditches on both sides of the site, so you're raising the well up from there and probably be crowned where you go to both ditches.
But the self-pentation.
Self-pentation, all access.
Oh, I, I know, I understand that, but those little ditches overflow now? So that was one of the concerns we talked about, was we'd bring that up, that water's all gonna go someplace or displaced.
And I think y'all.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understood about still.
But, but the fact, to answer your question, all we're doing is making this pad ready, because if you bend this out as a, as a total package, like a, uh, fire station general contractor doing, then they're gonna be marking it up by an additional fifteen percent or more, just to, just to.
That's what I was getting at, the drainage, we're gonna have to put in the handle of some of this, it's.
Will, will be in the fire station.
Okay, 'cause it's not in this, okay. I, that's, was all I was trying to, make sure I'm understanding that, this hundred and five thousand is just site prep work?
That, that would be clearing the site, uh, we do have tons of soils in there that will be put into the rear, and we'll actually make kind of a big yard area into the rear.
Yeah, I noticed re grassing, I noticed that.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh-huh, okay.
You per say, any kind of flooding, uh, issues with it?
We, we, uh, actually tied the elevations to a theme of, uh, floodwater, and we're, uh, meeting our zoning regulations for floodplain ordinance to be above.
I know, it takes the flood.
Uh, so, what, what we have, uh, tonight is, you know, like I say, if you do pass, and, and, and pass it to award it to lowest and best bid, I would make it subject to rural water, uh, looking at construction methods, make sure it wouldn't damage the string. Uh, you know, water sources, an important asset, but what we're doing is taking out soils and putting in soils, we're not fracturing the rock, we're not, uh, destroying the rock, and, uh, but I would like to have that.
Um, alright, from the left, any, anybody got a question, Mr. Spencer?
Uh, Frank, I'm just noticing how much, it seems like it jumps around on how much they're grabbing out from seven thousand square yards to eight thousand, four thousand, I mean, how can they even do that far out?
Well, no, they're not jumping around, we've done that.
Well, I mean, it says, uh, I'm looking at what they're saying, and that how, like, some sixty hundred, some, uh, almost two thousand square yards difference.
No, are you looking at bid tagulation?
Of what?
The bid tagulation.
Yeah.
Okay, those, all of those items, one through eight are all the same, uh, product.
Let's give me the price.
There's different prices, and the prices change, uh, depending on where they get it, the ground from, that's right, but all the products are the same.
Right, I see, ma'am.
Yes. And it is four thousand cubic yards of, uh.
Like an aisle. And then you bring it in at seventy one hundred.
Seventy one, that's the way it's done.
Fill it back and then rise it up.
Look what it is, and it, they would use, it's nothing but, uh, lime soil, and it's all that, uh, four grills. What we're putting down is solid bedrock, no sinkholes down on the side. Once we go down the solid bedrock, we put a foot of surface stone on there, so that way any groundworm can, can migrate through that surface stone. And then we'll build it up, compact the turf, and we'll have a geotag on the side to hold it up. And that is part of the general contract.
And Frank, you have worked with this center, correct?
Yes, ma'am, I, I probably constructed ten to twelve projects.
We voted on this thing, can the waterworks still send their people out to everyone test them?
What, what I'm saying is, if you do, if you approve to award the bid, subject to rural water, looking at the construction methods, to, to make sure that it will not impact the, uh, railers' ways. Unless they come back and, well, I wanna hear their answer before we actually, uh, uh, light up the contracts.
So you have two of them at that time, right?
So.
Did you have one done?
No, we've already got one.
No, we're just saying, it's, well, we're getting that too.
No, we're getting an opinion from rural water in terms of construction methods, speaking impact and swelling.
Okay.
Alright, alright, another thing that came up, Frank, uh, is, uh, you know, people like, would like to consider the army. Okay, that's not what the bids don't, uh, understand that, and, and, you know, you're doing what we told you to do, doing everything, but some people would like to know, um, just in general, uh, we don't want to spend a whole bunch of money, you know, give them an idea of, um, there's two things that had to take place with our, uh, uh, trust, that I understand, you, you gotta have a place that's big enough to turn around, it's front of the building, or you gotta have a rear end.
Or a bug.
Or a bug, that's right. So, I don't know, but I have some feeling that some of the people, some of the council people up here would like you to give them a, a preliminary idea of what that might cost, and why you have to do it. Uh, one of the things that, that I've heard is that, you know, you would have to move it back from the entrance because of all the traffic up here. You'd have to back it up and get the pads away from, so you wouldn't be pulling across in front of people.
Yeah, and, and I looked at it just from a, from a windshield survey.
Right.
But here's what you'd have to come up with to, to do, do, do something.
You've got a very wide mixing area out front, needs to be addressed in, in rural city hall.
Oh, that was the aisle.
Where all, where you got the aisle, and you got, you got fifty to sixty feet of, of paving, no striking, uh, you've got a lot of traffic patterns in there, a fire station will compad that. So one of the things that you'd have to address is the traffic patterns and, and study that, get the striking right, remove the aisle, and that sort of thing, as part of that project. I don't have a process, because I, I really haven't looked at it. The way to address the fire station coming off of, uh, uh, park drive is the way I would look at it, and I haven't laid it out or anything, I wanted to use a real wide apron. So that the fire trucks would come in and have like a thirty foot radius, and then a big open area, so the trucks could come in and swing in, and then, and, and a distance of about seventy five feet, then back into the station.
If they did it from front load?
From front load, now, in, in doing that, when you start having trucks of that size swinging into a park area, you more than likely gonna conquer that entire area, because you're gonna have, you, you, the pavement just being torn up fairly quickly. Uh, you would have to be at least seventy five feet off the traffic lane, you're building sixty feet. And then, uh, I, I think you got enough space out there, I had a shot of graves, see how much you might have to level out, but, uh, I feel like you gotta have some space out there. The other thing that we gotta look at, the logical path coming out of park drive is to go down road street. And I haven't had, uh, a highway department come out here to look and see if they would want or require emergency support there. The other thing is, I don't know their feeling on the rear entry, there was an old road that came into the rear of the armor. That is actually gravel, which is not suitable for, uh, truck or fire truck. So we'd have to do some upgrade there, in that, we actually establish permission, and just get a windshield shut away, I think we could get our ride in at a rear entry, I don't make slight adjustments for the water to take that, you know, also. Which is, if, if you're coming back to the call, you just have to make another round of bill, I think, it'd be logical to come up a rear, have a, uh, rear bike door open, and then park the truck, rather than having to, uh, move that, uh, to the front.
That makes substantial cost, that.
Well, that, that rear road, you know, that rear road, it costs, uh, twenty five hundred thousand bucks.
Black.
This one's black, and, and you might have to do some grading on the site, because it does drop off doors, another green back there, you know, maybe another twenty thousand dollars in grading. I would think for improvements, you need to do some lighting out the old park drive, it's very dark, uh, with the striking and things of that nature, we're gonna spend a little bit, now, this is all just off.
I understand.
I, I don't have, no, so.
You and your fellow lots of business.
I don't say, I have to say.
But now the lighting and the striking and all that.
Needs to be done anyway.
That needs to be done anyway, and that's not on this bit here from this side either.
Oh, no, no, well, no, well, I'm just talking in general about park drive.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying, if we're, this is just a site bit here.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we're talking what we'd have to fill in and side work there.
I would, it wouldn't be quite the same, though, uh, more, more, I love to discuss, make use of the practice, of coming in and out, stuff like that. Okay, alright, uh, on the right, I've got, y'all, quick, Mr. Kevin.
Well, well, Frank, I do have some concerns, because which way that water's gonna go, what's gonna happen to all that water? And then, and the droughts and that, the, seemed to run a tick by, so once it's flooded, and I think the last one we had, it come across the street, remember, a church? It blew all the way up like a river, and all that water had flowed on, and I went and looked at it, and it was sprayed up, sorry, I got a cold, like, it was sprayed it all around, where we gonna put that in the section? And those other people down there, and you and I have talked about this before, about down those many people, how they, what are we gonna do about those people who came from that water?
The, the detention of the address wants to be actually at the station, if you're looking at it, that, that area, the, the actual footprint of the pavement and building is gonna be less than half, I think.
You know, I, I think, you know, what we shouldn't be, what they don't look, and you can't look at cars. We've been down the road before, at the cause of, we stopped, it started coming out of the blue, like, a park, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, then we run across, we got another one in the way, they're taking it for something else, you know, another group thing. And which, how far out all that water, which direction is gonna go now?
Well, I, I, I can tell you, we have the finalizing design, uh, Council of Washington, but the detention will happen beside, yes, ma'am.
Well, and, and another thing, you know, I, I, I look back on history, how Leeds went through it, when we got Walmart's in, uh, the old Walmart, and I guess all these stuffs were done in. And all of a sudden, years to come, we filled up sinkholes that we'd said it wasn't, you know, they just dropped down, costing people in the area Walmart hundreds of thousands of dollars to just do, and I think they often lost a couple. We have another lady up on, uh, uh, at the new street, she walked out her back door, she loved it, you know, about a hundred fifty foot rock, and none of that. These things, these things is concerning, and we talking about filling up on top of it, because that's up on the east end. And I think the people in Leeds need to understand too, I do worry about how much water we're getting up right now, we have no water, just rocking in. But when summer gets here and things dry up, I see brown town cats, they cut that old water, no one else, no lead, they can't do. And, you know, those things are concerning, I don't wanna lose that water, especially, it scares me to hear the Alabama. I don't want to move that water, especially, it scares me to hear the Alabama and Georgia is fighting over water, and our government fighting over it. Now, I'm not willing, and, and I'm being honest about it, I'm not willing to move, you know, position. And the doctor study to tell me that we're going to be guaranteed our water, we're going to guarantee this twenty years, that this, we're not going to have to go back and drop another two or three hundred thousand dollars off there. You know how much you need to carve to build a sinkhole.
Well, to handle, to answer, offering questions. We had a jail site, to discover, come out of the side, I was concerned about sinkholes, just like I was concerned on the side of the rest of the, the Calwas guy. We had a jail tech come out there, I hadn't walked the side, even before they started drilling. And I was, they, they can come out there and visually see if there's a problem. And walked the side, I walked it with, there was no sinkhole, it was just, and then some, some, several drill holes down there. That felt like, what is there, it was solid dead bone. So I think we got that part addressed. If they came back with any doubt, then I would say, just no goes, just like it did with, with Calwas. And now, as far as stormwater runoff, we're going to retain the difference between clean and waste, based on twenty-five year storm, which is required of most developments. And normally don't require that of one of this, that is this small, but we will involve the six figures towards this one. The other thing, this side does have sanitary seal down. You'll have a trench drain, those through the base, like water, you have a sink from the trucks, which is back with a fire station. Those will go into a grease interceptor or a red interceptor and then go to the sewer. So you're not having anything that would, you know, contaminate a, a source. Now, a spring is artesian. A spring is not collecting surface water. It is by permit not allowed to collect surface water. I want real water, but what I'm saying is, if you pass this, pass it with the condition that real water has looked at our construction methods and doesn't feel that it would impact with, uh, railings. So we wouldn't enter a contract with this contractor until we know the answer to that question.
No, are we going to have to move in there blocks, in fact?
No, sir. All we're doing is scraping off, is basically top soil all the way down to the top of the rock. And what we're going to do is take the trees off in that area, limit the tree removal to, to a point, you know, where we don't make it look uncracked. But take enough trees off, we'll waste that, that soil, then have a footprint to a fire station. And, but we're not fracturing the rock, we're not cutting rocks, we're not getting a whole land out there all last.
All right. Are we concerned about the tanks at the armory site? Are they going to be a problem?
Well, if we do, if y'all ask me to book the armory site, I think one of our good parts of due diligence is to get a jail tech to do a research. There, there is, A M has on file that the tank storage tanks have been permitted and placed. And they would need to research that, go to the site, and give it a claim bill of health. If we do discover that there's a underground tank out there, then that would have to be removed before the fire station.
No, it's going to cost them some money.
It's out there, it's going to have to be moved.
Yeah, we find it, you know. We find if we got to move.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
So if you don't go looking for it, you don't have to pay them.
I'm not going to play that. Maybe it's going to matter if we show them.
When we can, when we can, so after the demolition, it does not show the time, so.
Um, the biggest question I got, y'all know the reason that the fire station came to a vital size, it's important that people have fire response. I S O, we're rerating this, we went from a five, from a four to a five slash nine. Is that right, Alan?
Yes.
That means part of the city's five, the western and southern parts of the cities are nine. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's even, that's a lot of people that are within five miles of the fire station, okay? Because it's got to do with, you have to go to the fire, you got to come back, stuff like, so they, that, that weighs into it too. You've got to go four miles to the fire, you got to come back four miles to supply another fire. All right, the deadline for insurance to be rerated and sent out is October the first of every year. So what do you think the latest, you could start on this and make it by October the first? I mean, if we look at these other issues, what's the latest thing to start, let's make it by October the first.
Well, I haven't started any design of a fire station itself, mainly because I wanted to get this, this part done before we did it. We have looked at some preliminary, uh, uh, four companies, but, you know, we have to look at each site specifically.
Right.
I can't just say, just do a generic fire station. So if I got started, let's say you avoid this bid tonight, okay? If we get started on the plans for the fire station, where you can start building, we can plan. Uh, let's say I started the fifteenth of February. The quickest I could have planned is the fifteenth of March. We could be under contract on the fifteenth of April, okay, with a contract. Takes, uh, minimum of five months to build a fire station in that situation. Because, uh, it's my, my own.
So we got about a two-week window max?
If, if it's up, let's say it's not finished by October, but we're under construction. That's not going to help at all. Because, I mean, they've let us go twenty-something years, but nothing started. So I don't understand why they wouldn't let us go a month.
It probably wouldn't change your way.
No, it, it doesn't affect when the insurance comes out. That affects when I S O, I S O can rate you anytime. But the insurance, is there any October, any insurance paper on there?
Yes.
When's it come out?
Uh, even if we apply for, in October, they will release the rates, um, July first. So we're still looking at a year of higher rates.
Even if it's built before October first?
If we apply by October first. Now, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because if, what they do is, we apply, and then they can come back and say, okay, if you meet these stipulations, which is what we've done for the last twenty years in the barter with them, of give us time, give us time, then they'll come back and say, okay, you have deficiencies in this area. We'll give you six weeks or thirty days to fix it. So even though it's built, you still have to go through their process, and then they release the new rates July first.
The rates are released on July first, if you don't get billed, it's all, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, depending on when your homeowner's comes up, is when you get billed.
No. I S O man, I met with him, and he said he would come back out here and reevaluate us as a favor to us as soon as we could get him here. All, all I'm trying to add is, if he comes back out here and reevaluates us and changes our rates, is that going to affect us this year?
Insurance.
And that may vary per insurance.
Well, no, insurance service organization is like the umbrella. Everybody follows it.
So he comes out here and reevaluates us before October.
He couldn't make an exception, yes.
And we could get, and it could go on this year's track. Possibly. You're saying it could, I mean, this, it can or it can't?
It could.
That's all I meant.
She's just saying it could.
It could. I mean, we would have to negotiate. I would think after twenty years of negotiating with them.
And Alan's, they're trying to do other stuff to get it down too, like getting a fire tower and burning buildings and trainings, all kinds of stuff that's over the, you know, experts that we're trying to do to help get it down some. Uh, all I want to say is, I think people are, one misconception people have is that we have a lot of options. We really don't. Frank's got them out. So we only have two stations, we don't have many options. We look, we spent two days after our work session, Kevin and Frank and I, Alan, riding around, looking if there's other sites. Short of buying up commercial property and tearing it down, uh, the, you know, a lot of people thinking we could run up and build it on the school road. Got the school traffic, plus the school has asked me to consider that land for school, another school. Okay? So we can't build on that land, we'd be taking up land that they may have, you know, what if they get overflowed for another school? Uh, some of the other properties people talked about had some logistical problems with drainage, uh, that weren't big enough. Uh, those things that the state was coming in to do in the future, like at President Creek, we'll vet some of that. I mean, we beat our heads against the wall, try to find some third site that would work. If you found something that was centrally located, that would be within five miles of everything, you, I, we had to put it right smack dab, even more in the middle of residential area. The one nineteen site has got no house on the left, no house behind it, no house on the right, and a house across the street like that. Uh, the army site doesn't have any houses around it, except the house, uh, the one house across the street. Problem with it was the fact that we may have a splash park, we may have, we've got City Hall, we've got courts, we've got civic center, we've got football, we've got the baseball. So if y'all want to come to look at the armory site, and you only have a two-week window to give you some kind of ideas about it and decide what y'all want to do, and to let the waterworks board have two weeks to do this other deal they're going to do. Bring it back in two weeks, let him present it, and then let's vote. Y'all, would y'all like to do that?
I, I like to speak to that.
Okay.
I am one hundred percent against putting it at the army site. I don't have a feeling, I'm in the middle of one nineteen, I have no feeling this way or this way. Uh, I trust what you've done, uh, but that's my opinion. I think if we put that up here, I'm up here a lot. The traffic for the sports activities, uh, for everything that goes up, and, and our planned forest splash park, just, it's a very, it would make it a very dangerous place for people to drive in and out of, extremely dangerous. And I for one am not willing to take that chance with that many lives coming in and out because of the fact that the fire station cannot face the street, it has to face the city hall.
Uh, you want to show how, how located Frank, you showed one of the, you did a lot of work, but how centrally it's located and any shift in the way from which the way from making requirements. Uh, and point out the army site too. I mean, the army site's in the middle too. We talked to I S O, I S O said, talking about what site they'd recommend, they said, either site centrally located, it meets the requirement. However, any kind of safety issue would be up to us, okay? Like what Ms. Ernest was talking about. And then we got, you know, we got, people got issues with other places.
The only way I could answer the safety concerns, and I can try and get this accomplished in two weeks. The only way I could do that is to site the building on a, on a site, and get a traffic engineer such as Merrill Skipler or Skipler Consultants to actually look at it and see what they think the impact will be, they'll probably won't even actually do a traffic.
Have you done that on one nineteen site?
He might turn around and show off it about fifty yards, and they probably figured out. I mean, we didn't, we didn't just go. It has to do with where, with, with this whole mapping of all of it, it has to do with, the ability to get like, like Moody's got one station right in the middle of town. We got the old lady, and we got, and we got two stations.
They're two blocks together.
With our all of those out towards the west, and, and out towards east. And we can't get far, we can't keep moving away from people, we've got to try to get, we can meet all of our model requirements. Uh, you know, we want it to be in the best place, but we just don't have any options. Yeah, so. Anybody else who's got, or anything, got anything to say, that y'all want to entertain in two weeks, and let the waterboard look at it, let Mr. Spencer look at it, and then come back and decide what we want to do? And in that two-week time, if anybody up here can find another site that we, you know, we look, I found a couple sites, it cost three hundred thousand dollars to buy one. And we can afford that.
I would say Mary Lake would, yeah, we're thinking about coming back to this site, let's dump a word of the bid, let's just table that. Because I don't want to, I don't want some vague language, and then the contractor say, well, the waterboard agreed, so we'll board the bid.
I, I think what we could, we could table the bid for two weeks, and then considerate it, and then come back and vote it either up or down.
If that's what you're thinking, the condition is just a little too vague.
Yeah, I, I would, if, if, if we're going to start it on, uh, for two weeks, then I would table it till the next week. Now, in terms of due diligence, I, what I would do is go out and shoot the site, see what our, our, our cost is going to be associated with the cover field and bringing the road with the rear entry. Try to get the highway department out here to look and see if they would bless the rear entry, if they would have any issues with us coming out on Park Drive, even though we're not doing any on the Park Drive, as far as the entrance stuff, uh, on the seventy-eight. Uh, get, come over the cost estimate, I can do that. Uh, and I will try to get a jail tech to give us claim bill of health in terms of the, the, uh, underground tank. I don't know if I could get a traffic, a canyon into it, but I'll try.
Let me ask.
And I'm not sure it'd be the best time to get a traffic canyon.
Well, if that's a concern, and safety is a concern, safety is a very important part. Uh, I'm not qualified, I'm not a traffic engineer that does that day-to-day things, and they don't trip counts into a, a account of right nature. If you don't do that, it might take you a while.
Frank, uh, my question is, if they'll give us a, um, out to one nineteen, the state approved that entrance, why wouldn't they give us an entrance on seventy-eight without having to go through the Park Drive?
It has to do, it has to do with site, let's just.
Is that, is that entrance, oh, seventy-eight been lowered down for some reason?
No, the old one, the one in the armor, uh, it, it's, it's not lowered down.
It's the years. That's what I was going to say, could we not consider improving that entrance?
If you touch it, if you touch it, you have to prove it, you got to do it.
That's right.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, they know we got a drive there anyway.
But it's technically not.
It's being used right now.
I'm just, well, my, my, let's say we sold that to.
You never sold it.
If we sold that to a company, and they set a business right there, um, they'd have to give them a right away to their business, would they not?
No, they'd come off Park Drive.
No, I, no, you don't understand what I'm saying, if it's sat right there where the road is, not, close to Park Drive.
Okay, I'm, I'm considering the armory parcel, the separate parcel, which it stands on, it has its own, uh, little structure. Uh, if they got an access to seventy-eight and did not use Park Drive, which Park Drive would be an access to also, they would have to get a permit. I have not shot the site distances on it, but driving it, I don't think it would be, because you have to have eleven times the speed limit, and the speed limit out there now is thirty-five. And I think if it would not warrant a left, you know, I think it would be warrant a right. And even at that, the state is probably going to require you to put in a condom, a, a D cell, uh, if we do, you can go to the rear exit, which is an additional part.
You're funny, I, I, I knew we talked my daughter, but I also wanted to look at, at, uh, Brimspire, or whatever, was it old with that?
Across the street.
Across the street. Because, I mean, it's enough, it's enough.
On this side?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, on the, by the police line?
Mm-hmm. But you, you gotta redirect that road and everything anyway.
We gotta have, uh, a hundred thirty-five feet of that.
So you don't think you can get it, even redirect it to the road?
I doubt it.
Bill would probably be a lot, too, because of the drainage.
Uh, that, that is less to. Uh, that's, that is less suited to community of all of us. And, and I'm, I even, the mayor, like I said, the mayor and, and chief and I've been racking up like, just trying to get into the business district. Looked at the area, uh, uh, over there by, uh, the school, there's some businesses, and, and there's some vacant lots, and the businesses off that active. Uh, but there's a storm right now, blocking the middle of that.
Well, what about, when you turn like there on, uh, I'm not, I'm not here, well, they always got their little, uh, building.
Carol?
Yeah.
Carol.
But you getting, you getting where your, uh, you getting way, further away from something, and, and, and too far away from the end of one nineteen?
By inches or what?
No.
Few miles?
And you're also getting into, uh, cutting down on response time.
What, what you do is, you're gonna look at the safety part of it, as part of what's up here in the citizen, if what's coming down on that team, like, or true, that's what you're saying. So, we also got to put in the fact that we're gonna have about three hundred cars going into that ballpark down there.
What I'm saying is, in two weeks, I doubt I can get you that answer.
But the cars coming, going into the ballpark, it's gonna be a lot up the road from that, to the side. So, those cars, that's far enough to move, those cars will be able to come.
There's over five, there's over five hundred feet. Right. And that's pretty much right here.
But we, the only thing is, we just have to stay within the surroundings of being safely located, being a slight wooden, and, uh, being able to, uh, meet the requirements. And, so, I mean, I, I personally wouldn't want you fishing around for tanks, let's put it that way. The rest of it, I don't have a problem with.
So, you're, uh, you don't do a lot of.
I don't think I'd do it before the two weeks of it. That's what, I mean, we, we talked about.
We need to know that it could be a possibility, that, because we wouldn't have, we've become aware that they're paying us.
Frank and I, we, we don't think, somebody that's older than me might know.
Demolition.
Demolition, was he even looking for?
Uh, he was gonna, we, we called right, they didn't look.
Should be on the corner of that little hill down there, somewhere.
They didn't look for it. Do you think there's tanks? Will?
Don't joke, we can clean that place out. Right there, go down to the side, there's swimming pool, there's a gate right there, about twenty feet beside the gate, to the right of the gate a little bit, there's, there was a gas tank right there. And I don't remember picking it up, all I think I remember is, the building coming up there. Last kid be on top of it.
Okay. Well, how about this, what do we give, two weeks for water work board to do, they gotta get out there. Two weeks for Mr. Spencer to give us some preliminary, something. Uh, whatever, he can give us an idea of what, what it would take.
I'll try to give you a cost associated, just like we did on, on my.
Right. Uh, without, um, looking at the tank's problem right now, and then, we owe it to these, uh, people who made these bids to either, either accept them or turn them down, with, I don't think we're really waiting much for them, for teams, we can leave.
Well, no, no, we have sixty days.
We do.
In con- my contract is, we have sixty, they have to hold their bid for sixty days. And I want to know if the contract, I hope it was good, passed the contract first.
Too long a delay affect our timeline, or, or possible?
I can give what you need back to you.
We will, it's definitely be a, a red bid, no problem.
We can hold bids for sixty days.
We hold for sixteen days.
So, and, and there's no, if, if you tank what tonight, we got sixty days before his timeline's up.
Okay.
How hard would it be to get, what, near that type here, get bids on the Army area?
We can't.
It, it'd be hard.
I can get estimates, but I can't, I can't give you all of them.
Hard, yeah.
I can't give you all of them. It, it takes three weeks just to have them. And it's, it's too costly. It costs a lot to put these two guys up.
Well, let's get the estimate.
How about this? In the two weeks, you get the water work board to promise they can get us something. Mr. Spencer does preliminary, uh, what we just talked about. And, uh, we, anybody that can make a recommendation on a third site that meets our requirements, I think y'all can find them. If not, bring it back in two weeks with all this information, we'll decide.
You can say a motion on that.
If anybody will make a motion on that. Anybody, one second.
Sit down.
Okay. Well, I think we've probably had a pretty good discussion, but how about all the motions, anybody want to make a discussion, motion on the discussion? I mean, discussion on the motion. Excuse me. All right, all those are favorable, of two weeks, coming back here, bringing this back up, they, uh, all opposed, they know.
So, maybe I would recommend making a motion, taking the bid.
Okay. That part of, no, I didn't say that, do we have motion?
Well, I did say.
Well, I have said a motion, Frank could come back in two weeks.
Bring those back up.
Well, I did, yeah, I think I did say that.
That's what I was saying, we need to, we need to talk about.
Yeah, we did.
Or not, let's say type before that, that way there's notice, understanding issue.